Admitting someone, so I'm gonna turn that function back over to you.
Okay, oh yeah.
Alright, so, uh, welcome to our, uh, club meeting, Rotary Club of Nodonia Hills, regular meeting today. I am, uh, your substitute teacher.
I heard we're gonna have a movie today.
I don't believe that your regular teacher left much instruction, so you're free to enjoy this time slot. Okay, uh, so at this time, we'll have our invocation, uh, well, okay, so the, the meeting is now called to order. Is there a motion to accept this agenda?
I so move.
Yeah, is there a second?
A second.
Alright, all of you, please respond by saying aye.
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 Alright, at this time, we'll have our invocation by John Grace.
Let's be in a humble spirit of prayer. Gracious heavenly Father, uh, thank you for the opportunity to join us together today by technology. Give us the patience to, uh, learn about not only this technology, but also the new exciting news about vaccinations. Give us the patience to, to endure the troubles and, and trials of those who are experimenting with this huge distribution effort. Give them wisdom, give those that are involved in the vaccinations wisdom and, and, uh, and resources so that they might fulfill their mission. Be with us as we have our lunch today. Give us the strength to do your will. We ask these things in your holy name dear God. Amen.
Amen.
At this time, we will, uh, prepare to recite the Pledge of Allegiance. Let Debbie set that up for us. Alright, on me, I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For all. Do we have any visiting Rotherians with us today that we're aware of? Looks like we're all family here.
I, I have a, I had it going on my phone, so I'm not sure she's there, there yet. Laurel Samsonas, who's the administrator from the United Methodist Church in Macedonia.
Oh. Hello.
Hello.
Welcome, Laurel. Welcome today. Uh, this day in history, uh, I don't see Casey Wright on the Zoom. So I brought up some, uh, decided to back him up today. Uh, this day in history on February 16th, 1923, in Egypt, the archaeologist Howard Carter entered the sealed burial chamber of the ancient Egyptian ruler King Ty. This day in history on February 16th, 1968, launched the first 911 call, which was placed in the United States. Now, uh, taken for granted as first course of action in the event of emergency by nearly all of the nations, 327 million people. 911 is relatively recent, a recent invention, and was still not standard across the United States for many years after its adoption by Congress. And last, and this day, on this day, February 16th, 1984, Bill Johnson becomes first American to win Olympic gold in downhill skiing. Alright, quite a few, uh, events, historical events occurred on this day, and thanks to the History Channel, they have plenty of those. Uh, special days and birthdays. Do we, uh, have any special days or birthdays to celebrate today?
Nope.
Okay, well, let's just celebrate, let's just make this day a special day. How about that? Alright, humor of the day, Dr. Con.
I'd say if we got a couple of short ones, uh, that are kind of appropriate, and, uh, they come from past President John Bosco. In the past, the advice was to stay away from negative people. Nowadays, the advice is stay away from positive people. And a second one, the world has indeed turned upside down. Old folks are sneaking out of the house, and their kids are yelling at them to stay indoors.
You got that from who?
Past President John Bosco.
Thank you both. Next, uh, happy and sad dollars. I didn't see, uh, Carl here. I don't think he arrived. Uh, was certainly something happy and sad dollars on his behalf.
I'll give a happy dollar. So I, we, well, my husband Kevin and I ventured to Cincinnati this weekend. We took a day trip. And we went to Jungle Jim, the giant grocery store. If you haven't been, I highly recommend it. That was our first outing in a while, so it was kind of fun.
Wow, that's great. You gotta get out more.
Hey, Paige, we were just there in the one in Cincinnati last weekend. It is amazing.
Yeah, we went to the one in Eastgate, and I spent a lot, and we have so many yummy things. Um, if you've never been to Jungle Jim, they, um, all countries are represented at this grocery store. They have exotic meats and dairy products and a bunch of wine and cigars, and you name it, they have it. It's like 300,000 square feet. It's really, really cool to check out.
It is very cool. Worth the drive.
Wow, thanks, thanks for sharing. Any other happy or sad dollars? Okay, change for charity, Jacob?
Uh, change for charity, we accepting the happier sad dollars. We don't really have a way of doing that yet, so I'm just kind of working alongside that.
So it looks like the recipient at the Longwood YMCA, is that right? Your name is by, okay, that's by. Um, okay, so, so it looks like, uh, the recipient for change for charity is Longwood YMCA. Our, um, speaker for today is Dr. Samantha Lozenhauser. I hope I got that correct.
Lozenhauser.
Um, she is an infectious disease pharmacist at the Cleveland Clinic, have been working, uh, as a secondary vaccine pharmacist slash coordinator for the COVID vaccine rollout as, uh, since, uh, the vaccine rollout. Uh, she's also, uh, she also works at Cleveland Clinic Medina Hospital, providing infectious disease expertise. Have been with the clinic since 2016. She's originally from North Canton, Ohio, and graduated from Ohio Northern University with her doctorate in pharmacy in 2015. She is proud to say that she is Ohio-born and raised. Welcome, Dr. Samantha Lozenhauser.
Thank you very much. Well, thanks for having me today. Um, I have a short presentation. Um, I'll see if I can share my screen. If you guys can let me know if you see it. Can I get a thumbs up if it looks good? Okay, thank you. Alright, so, um, I'd like to recognize Caitlin Revard as well. She is our clinic vaccine head coordinator and another pharmacist, one of my colleagues. Um, she helped put these slides together, um, but I, Samantha Laupziger, I'm running the presentation today. So we'll kind of start with the basics, um, discovery of SARS-CoV-2, or what is known as COVID-19, and where it came from. Talk about vaccine development, how the vaccines got here, Operation Warp Speed and its role in vaccine development, and kind of where we sit with current vaccines and what's to come, uh, for the rest of the country and for future vaccinations in COVID-19. So to start, what is a coronavirus? A coronavirus is actually a family or grouping of viruses. They're most commonly known to cause a common cold. Um, in the last 20 years or so, we've started to see them grow a little bit more as far as epidemic pandemic-causing type viruses. So if you remember SARS, which is a severe acute respiratory syndrome in 2002, and then there was a smaller outbreak in the Middle East known as MERS, which was the Middle East Respiratory Syndrome. And then now in December 19, we started to see a cluster of viral pneumonia cases in Wuhan, China, and that was identified to be a novel, kind of a new variation of a coronavirus that we had not seen yet before. Um, this became known as the Severe Acute Respiratory Syndrome or SARS-CoV-2, so it's a new variant. Um, the disease itself ended up being named COVID because it is more than just a respiratory syndrome now we're finding, so it's coronavirus disease, and then the 19 comes from, here it was identified in 2019. So it popped up in December. By the end of January, we had already identified it, isolated it, done a genetic sequence on it by Chinese researching scientists, and then by March 2020, it had spread around the world. Um, so obviously, a lot of people were saying, okay, we need a vaccine, we gotta find a way to fight this. Um, so how do we do that? Where does it come from? So I have two, the screen kind of split into, the top is traditional vaccine development. And the second one is kind of what happened with our SARS-CoV-2 or COVID-19 vaccine development. Because it seems like these came out really quickly, and they did, but just to kind of demonstrate that skips were not, steps were not skipped in the process. So in traditional vaccine development, we're designing and exploring and looking at preclinical studies, we're looking at animal models, and this can take up to years and two to four years for each of these steps. Conveniently for the COVID vaccine, we had some pre-existing knowledge of coronaviruses from the SARS and MERS outbreaks in 2002 and 2012. So this piece was expedited a little bit. And then we moved into our animal model process development. Um, again, some of these were a little bit pre-existing because of research on the previous coronaviruses. And some of this was also happening in parallel at the same time, so we didn't see a completion of this step before the next one started, so we saved some time there. Normally then, once we have a product that looks safe in the petri dish and in animal studies, then we submit it to different drug regulatory agencies to be studied in humans to look at what dose we need, what safety mechanisms we should be looking at, and then what it looks like in the general population. And these three phases can take up to two to three years apiece, so we're looking at, you know, six to 10 years, um, just in clinical studies before we even start large-scale production of vaccines. What happened with the COVID vaccine is that not only did we complete these phases, we completed them in an overlapping manner. So we had studies looking at doses and safety at the same time. We had studies that were looking at safety in larger populations at the same time. So things were happening concurrently. Um, we also had manufacturing starting a lot earlier. Typically, this is not done because it's a huge risk to the manufacturer. If you make all this product and your studies don't actually show an efficacious outcome, then you have wasted product, wasted manpower, time, and money. Um, but in this particular situation, we started manufacturing before the trials were done. We had trials that were overlapping. So even though we were looking at all the same data, it was just happening concurrently. So that's why we were able to come up with vaccines much, much faster rather than doing each of these steps individually. The reason we were able to do this, or at least part of it, was because of Operation Warp Speed, which you've probably heard about in the news. Um, so it was announced, uh, quite early in the year, about in 2020 in May, and it was really a federally backed program to help accelerate treatment, diagnostics, and vaccine development. And I think that's been where the media has kind of hooked on to Warp Speed the most, is the vaccine development phase. The government was able to pair with a lot of these research groups and private agencies and private sector groups to help finance and back and provide support for all of these processes. So the companies that were manufacturing the products weren't at nearly as much risk because they had federal government helping them to get stuff ready to go prior to knowing 100% what the results were gonna look like. So that's kind of the vaccine development. So let's talk about how it works, what we're targeting, how it's helpful. This is a pretty detailed slide, but the main takeaway point is that our coronavirus has, it's kind of like a little circular blob, and then on the outside of our virus, we have these little spike proteins. The spike proteins are what attach to our cells in our body and then get incorporated and cause the disease, the respiratory issues, and all the other, um, poor outcomes we're seeing in the patient, our patient population. So the spike protein is really what our vaccines are targeting. So if we identify the virus before it attaches, and we identify the spike proteins before it opens up to release any um, viral particles and really infect our system, then we're gonna stop the spread in our bodies, and we're gonna catch it before the virus particle opens up at all because we're gonna catch something that's on the outside of the virus. So that's our target, as I said, for our vaccines. That's what the vaccines are looking for to hunt down. The vaccine technology has also been a big part of the media and the news because it's kind of, it's new technology. It's new in the fact that it has not been used in a mass vaccination before, but the technology has been around for quite some time. We'll get into a little bit more about how these vaccines work and what they are. Um, but just to kind of give you some perspective on the worldwide approach to this, um, as of about, I think, late November, there were fifty, about 50 vaccines that were in post-clinical trials and being evaluated worldwide. And there's another 150 or 160 vaccines that are pre-clinical status, so they're not done with all of their studies yet. But worldwide, we're seeing tons and tons of research and development trying to find the best way to do this. And you can see throughout the world, we have many, many different types of vaccines being produced. So we have viral ones. We have viral vector vaccines, which are gonna be the Oxford-AstraZeneca and the Janssen ones. Um, we have DNA and RNA-based ones, which are Pfizer and Moderna that everybody's kind of seeing. So worldwide, tons of options. Different countries have different ones in research and ones that they have started to use. So let's focus on what we have in the US. So right now, we have Pfizer, Biontech, and then Moderna, um, active and currently being given throughout the United States. Oxford-AstraZeneca and Janssen are both coming close behind. Um, and then Novavax is a little bit further behind them, but they are also in the process of being developed. So these are our top five ones that people are keeping an eye on because they're the closest to being sent to FDA for approval and review and completing their clinical studies. So we'll start with Pfizer and Moderna. They are our mRNA vaccine products. So again, kind of a complicated picture, but the key takeaway is really how does an mRNA vaccine work? What we have is a very small portion of what's called mRNA or messenger RNA. Um, it's genetic material that we have duplicated synthetically in a lab environment, and it's placed inside a small particle, um, that helps kind of keep it safe and transports it into, um, the body for, to help provide immunity. So this genetic material or the RNA is what our body recognizes and says, hey, I know what to do with this, because we have regular human RNA. Um, so it, it, what that RNA is doing is telling our body to make spike proteins. So it's not a whole virus. It can't cause infection. It's a very small piece of the virus. And once it makes the spike protein based on the blueprint that we're providing it, so our RNA are kind of like our blueprints, um, then the RNA gets degraded. It's not incorporated into our DNA. It doesn't alter our cells or their functionality at all. We're just providing it a blueprint. Our body prints off a spike protein, and then our immune system takes over from there. It says, hey, this is foreign. I don't like it. I'm gonna recognize it and kill it off. So once our immune system has that memory and has said, hey, I know what this is, I'm gonna kill it, it provides, um, immunity down the road. So if we get exposed to it again, it has a better chance of fighting it off. So some really good advantages, some of them I've already kind of mentioned. It's not infectious. It's not an active virus, so it can't cause, um, COVID-19. It's not integrating. It does not get into our cells or change any of our functionalities within our cells. Um, the platforms are scalable, so a lot of our manufacturers are able to ramp up production pretty quickly. Um, and then again, it's gonna boost our immune function. The disadvantages, it is first in class, um, so we have a lot of understanding to do yet of the long-term effects. Um, but those studies are ongoing. The adverse events that are kind of hitting the news are allergic reaction and kind of COVID-19 symptoms. So as you might see with a flu shot, um, some people get headaches or just feel kind of lousy, they're really tired. Um, that will, we could see potentially that kind of same thing with a COVID vaccine. Um, the mRNA products are a two-dose series, so people have to come back three to four weeks later. And then cold storage requirements are our next big thing. Um, I'm sure you've heard in the news about the freezers and the cold chain, and you know, what exactly is that? What does that mean? So our cold chain is what is required to keep the vaccine stable. So they're very temperature sensitive. They're kind of finicky. They don't like to get warm. So particularly for the Pfizer product, it has to be stored at, um, negative almost 70 degrees, and that's salty, so it's really cold. And what's even more logistically complicated is that once you thaw it out, Pfizer has to be used within five days. Moderna, you get a month. You get 30 days to use that, and then once in the syringe, it's only good for six hours. So as soon as you pop the top on that vial and start drawing up doses and a needle to be administered, you have to use it in less than a typical workday. The good news is, all this logistics, um, seem to be worth it. Uh, looking at our overall vaccine efficacy, we're seeing that it's 95% effective. Um, so what does that mean? So looking at Pfizer, they evaluated the efficacy in a little over 36,000 patients, um, at the time of the UA approval. So what we were finding is that they had either confirmed or severe cases of COVID-19. 162 of the confirmed cases, nine severe cases, meaning patients had to be hospitalized. But if the patients were vaccinated, then we only saw eight cases of COVID-19, and only one patient had to be hospitalized. So it seems to be incredibly beneficial. Um, the really good news, especially since it seems to be hitting the older population a little more heavily, is that when they did a subgroup analysis to look at the patients who are 65 and older, we maintain the same efficacy and very similar efficacy for those 75 and older. So what does this look like graphically? Because numbers are sometimes a little abstract. Seeing a graph can really help, I think, understand it a little bit better. Um, so what we're seeing here is the vaccine or the incidence of COVID-19. So what percentage of patients in the study have acquired COVID-19? The blue line are the patients that got vaccinated, and the red line are the patients that did not. So if we look at the days, which is across the bottom of the graph, since they got their first dose of their vaccine, we start to see a deviation pretty quickly after, about two weeks after their first dose, where patients really start showing this immunity and this protection because the rate of COVID-19, the rate of infection of COVID-19 is much lower compared to those who did not get the vaccine, because we're seeing much higher infection rates in this red line. Moderna, very, very similar. So if we look at vaccine efficacy for Moderna, it was studying a little bit fewer patients, but still that number of 27,000. Um, they saw 94% efficacy, and again, to kind of put this in a little bit better perspective, of the patients who were not vaccinated, we saw 185 COVID cases, 30 people hospitalized. But then in those who were vaccinated, we had only 11 confirmed patients with COVID-19 and then zero hospitalized. Um, Moderna didn't show quite as high of a vaccine efficacy in those who are 65 and older of 86%, but this is still phenomenal. If we compare this to what we see for the flu vaccine on a yearly basis, if we say we see 60 to 70% efficacy for a flu vaccine, we're actually quite pleased with that. So these percentages in the 80s and the 90s are really, really high. Um, and we're, in the medical community, we're very excited about it. Again, to look at a similar graph, so, um, we have our time from dose one across the bottom. We have the number of COVID infections we're seeing in our patient population, um, going up. Uh, those who were vaccinated are rate stayed very low, and those who were not, we were seeing a higher increase in those who are infected with COVID-19. Again, if we look at the time from, uh, dose one, about that two or three week mark, we start to see the deviation. So once you get vaccinated, it does take some time for your immune system to process the, you know, that MRA that it was given, and then activate all the immune cells and build up that army to fight COVID away. So it's not instantaneous. It is gonna take some time. Since it is new technology and there are some concerns about vaccine side effects, let's talk a little bit about the safety and what we're seeing for these particular mRNA vaccines. Um, after the first dose, generally people feel pretty good and pretty normal. Um, they're very mild. Most of the time, it's that arm soreness, maybe a little bit of a headache, maybe a little bit tired over the next day or two after you get the vaccine, but nothing too unusual. The second dose seems to be a little bit more pronounced. Um, instead of mild, I call them more moderate. Some people get a fever and chills. Some people are very, very tired, and again, that arm soreness will be present, but might be a little bit worse than the first one. And this is just your body's reaction to recognizing, so you've already given it one chance to look at that mRNA. Now you're giving it a second chance, and it's already built up a little bit of an army, so it's going in there and it's fighting a bull war. So this is, while it might be a little disconcerting to hear about, it's your body working. It shouldn't be something that we see as, you know, I'm not gonna get the vaccine because of this. This is what your body should be doing. Allergic reactions have been in the news quite a bit as well. Um, the most typical allergic reactions that we're seeing are in patients that already have a severe allergic reaction to other, either medications or other vaccines. Um, anaphylaxis is that severe reaction. That's where you get lip tingling and swelling, throat swelling, making it hard to breathe. I usually think of anaphylaxis as those allergic reactions where people carry an EpiPen around because they might be allergic to bees or peanuts or strawberries. Um, it's not fully understood yet what the, what people are allergic to in the vaccine product, but it's suspected to be, um, polyethylene glycol or a polysorbate allergy. Um, those are very, very common medication byproducts. Um, polyethylene glycol is a really common stool softener, and they can use that in colonoscopy prep. Um, but it's taken orally and not typically injected, so the theory is that just because we're administering it to the body in a different way, it could be causing some allergic reactions. So because of this, all patients should be monitored for 15 minutes after vaccination. If you're going to have an allergic reaction, it's most likely going to be in that time window. Um, so we are monitoring patients. We're making sure that they don't have a reaction, especially if they're just walking into a clinic and then gonna drive home right after that. A couple other things to keep in mind with mRNA vaccines is that they're not interchangeable. Um, Pfizer patients should stick with Pfizer for the second dose. If you got Moderna for the first dose, you should get Moderna for the second dose. Dose. Um, Pfizer is hypothetically ideally given, uh, three weeks apart, Moderna four weeks apart. But as the logistics that we've kind of already talked about make this really complicated, there is some wiggle room. Um, the CDC is recommending as long as you get it within 42 days, which doesn't sound like a lot, but this is a full six weeks. So you have a month and a half to get that second dose, um, then it should still be fully efficacious. So you have a month and a half to get that second dose, then it should still be fully efficacious. As far as giving it with other vaccines, we don't really know what the effect would be. We don't know if the mRNA vaccine would be less efficacious. We don't know if the other vaccine that we would be giving you would be, would be effective at all. So the goal is to try and separate that by at least 14 days whenever possible. This was more of an issue earlier, a month or two ago, when we were seeing a lot of patients getting flu shots though. So case-by-case basis, we're going to weigh the risks and benefits of what that second vaccine might be and if we can wait that 14 days. Some patients have a lot of questions about, if I already had COVID-19, can I still get the vaccine? And yeah, so it is definitely still recommended. Even if you've had it recently, had COVID recently, as long as you're feeling well and you're outside of your quarantine window, then there's no reason you can't get the vaccine. The only component that we are concerned about is if you've received a monoclonal antibody product, which is kind of like that Regeneron combination product, or if you have received convalescent plasma. The concern with those is that we don't think that the vaccine may be as efficacious as it could be because you already have been given synthetically produced antibodies and it's going to defeat everything we just vaccinated you with before your body has a chance to make its own immunity. For pregnant and lactating women, very, very commonly, this patient population is excluded from clinical studies just because of the high risk and the emotional attachment and everything for this patient population. So they were also, and like I said, not unusually, excluded from any of the clinical studies. We're encouraging all of our patients to have a conversation with their OB or other care providers to have that discussion, say, should I get this COVID vaccine or not? So it is purely a personal decision and one that people may have been making in conjunction with their healthcare providers. So that's Pfizer and Moderna. That's what's on the market right now. But as I mentioned, we have AstraZeneca and Janssen that are also coming kind of close on our heels. So these two are a little bit different. Instead of an mRNA vaccine product, they're called an adenovirus vector. Adenovirus is also kind of like coronavirus in the fact that it causes common colds normally. What we use them for in the adenovirus vector vaccine is kind of like a Trojan horse. We take the virus's ability to replicate away. We take its genetics away so it can't cause infection anymore. And then we use the spike protein material from coronavirus injected into the adenovirus. And then that's what our body processes to make our immunity. So a visual representation of that. So we have our coronavirus particles. We have our genetic material for the spike protein and we put it in a non-replicating, non-infectious version of an adenovirus. And then that's what is used in the vaccine. This actually has quite a bit more technology and use in humans already. This has been used mostly in kind of endemic areas. So we have an Ebola virus vaccine by Johnson &amp; Johnson and we have another one by another company that are both for Ebola. And then there's also experimental studies going on right now for HIV, RSV, Zika, malaria, TB, to see if we can vaccinate against these viruses as well. So disadvantages, I guess, public perception is always an issue with vaccines. And there's some concern that you might have immunity to the vector itself rather than the actual genetic material. But again, studies and time will tell. So these are a little bit nicer because they don't have the logistical frozen chain, cold chain concerns that the mRNA vaccines carry. AstraZeneca and Oxford, their vaccine will still be a two-dose series about a month apart. So far, its efficacy has been a little variable, 62% and 90%. It's already been approved for use in the United Kingdom and this one still probably has a month or two before coming to the United States FDA. Johnson &amp; Johnson is our first COVID vaccine. That is a one-dose vaccine, so you're one and done. You don't have to come back for a second dose. And it has shown fairly good efficacy as well, 72% for preventing infection and 85% effective preventing hospitalization. So almost as high as a percentage as we're seeing with the mRNA vaccines. This particular vaccine is going to the FDA for review at the end of the month. So we could see this inpatient arms as early as March sometime, if it's approved. So what is emergency use and how is that different from regular medications? Emergency use is an expedited, but still very detail-oriented review of medications. It basically saves on a lot of paperwork, so we can get these rolled out a lot faster than we normally would. Right now, what we're doing in the United States is allowing the government to send vaccine to the state. And then the state decides how much vaccine goes to the pharmacies, to the health systems, to nursing homes, to whatever other distributor they're using within the state. So it's really a chain of, you know, if the state gives us, you know, 1,000 doses, what percentage goes to Cleveland Clinic? What percentage goes to Metro? What percentage goes to Mercy? So we're relying upon the state to give us vaccine before we can schedule appointments and start putting them in patients' arms. So who can get the vaccine right now, since we're talking about giving it and who's eligible? The general approach for vaccine distribution in the United States was to start with our patients that were long-term care residents, nursing home residents, and healthcare workers. So those were our big focus. But the goal and perspective on that was our nursing home residents are typically older. They're being the hardest hit by this. So if we can prevent hospitalizations and death, we're going to lessen the burden on the healthcare system and save lives, of course. The goal with the healthcare workers is obviously to keep our healthcare and our hospitals intact so we can continue caring for our patients. So this was the primary goal. The next phase, 1B, are our frontline essential workers. So again, thinking about our police and our paramedics and other groups that are emergency responders to, again, make sure we can continue supporting society. And then we started moving into adults outside of the nursing home system. Since 1B, we've started a little bit into 1C. So I would say Ohio is kind of sitting in a 1B, 1C area right now. We're starting to vaccinate patients as young as 65 and anybody younger than that that has a high-risk medical condition. Eventually, at some point this spring or summer, we might get to a point where we are able to say, anybody else that's not vaccinated, you're welcome to sign up now. I think that's going to be very dependent on Johnson &amp; Johnson being approved and the manufacturing capacity that Pfizer and Moderna can enhance, if they're able to do that. So another kind of way to look at this, and a little bit more detail for Ohio specifically. The week of January 19th, we were vaccinating patients that were 80 and older. The week of January 25th, we did 75 and older. February 1st, 70 and older. So now at this point, we're really able to vaccinate anybody 65 and older. And again, those who have severe developmental congenital, other medical conditions. One thing that Ohio did that wasn't necessarily endorsed by more federal groups was to start vaccinating employees of K through 12 schools to help try and keep those schools open and kids in the classroom. So as I mentioned, we're kind of start, we're well into starting to vaccinate patients and the general public. But through all of this, we're also working on completing Phase 1A. So any of our caregivers that couldn't get a vaccine for whatever reason, we're keeping up on them as well and trying to make sure that we're vaccinating anybody who's willing to get it. So if you want a vaccine, where do you go? On the Ohio Department of Health website, there is a COVID-19 vaccination program where you can kind of search and look for vaccination locations. You're not super computer-friendly and you don't want to navigate the ODH website, which I get, it's sometimes not the most user-friendly. Calling your county health department, your healthcare providers and a specialist, they might be able to tell you what's happening within the individual health system or where you might be able to find clinics within your area. Once you do get a vaccination appointment, what's going to happen when you're there? Well, the first thing is everybody's going to be different. There isn't a standard and everybody is doing the best they can with the resources that they have, including the number of personnel. Most sites are going to be by appointment only. There's just not enough supply right now to say, you know, vaccine clinic open, show up anytime between 8:00 and 5:00. We're also trying to maintain social distancing as best we can and help prevent our vaccine clinics from being an area where people are going to contract COVID-19. We also have to maintain the stability of the vaccine and the viability. So if we have 100 patients coming, we know that we can get X number of vials out of the refrigerator and let them thaw. Because we only have five days to use the Pfizer product, we have to make sure that we're not getting too much out so we don't waste it. Each site is going to schedule their second dose a little bit differently. Some of them might help you right onsite. Some of them might say, here's a phone number to call. So it's a good question to ask when you're there to make sure that you know you get that second dose appointment. You'll also get your CDC vaccine record card, which I'll show you on the next slide. And then you're going to have your observation time, that 15-minute window after your vaccine to make sure you don't have an allergic reaction. So the vaccine record card looks like this. We have the name of the patient and the date of birth blacked out. But it's a little, it would fit in your wallet. It's a little bit bigger than a credit card. But it basically just tells you what vaccine you got, what your lot number was, and the location that you got it. So you know that I got Pfizer, I got Moderna. And when you go to your second appointment, you can take that card and say, are you giving me Pfizer? Because that's what I got the first time. Because again, those products aren't interchangeable. We want to make sure that we stick with the same manufacturer for the first and second dose. So in summary, our vaccines were developed at work speed, but we still maintained our scientific integrity and looked at all of the same features that we would have as other vaccines. We just overlapped a lot of our clinical trials and our manufacturing processes to make this happen faster. Pfizer and Moderna are the products that are available and out in the general public right now. But Johnson &amp; Johnson and AstraZeneca are coming soon. And then we have multiple sites offering COVID-19 vaccination. Within the Cleveland Clinic alone, there's probably about a half a dozen places that are offering vaccine clinics on a regular basis. And like, I know, for example, my great aunt just got hers at Discount Drug Mart. So it might be as simple as getting in touch with a local pharmacy or your healthcare provider to help try and find a vaccine location. So that is all I have. What questions can I answer?
All right. Are there any questions for Dr. Blauhausen?
Yeah, I do.
Is it true? Oh, go ahead.
Oh, no, go ahead. You go ahead.
Is it true about you should not be getting other vaccines, like the shingle shot or flu shot, before you get the COVID shot?
Yeah, so you can get them. We just recommend separating them by two weeks if you can. Most of the time, we are trying to prioritize the COVID vaccine because if you're in front of us and we have the supply, we want to use it as fast as we can. But obviously, in cases where, say you step on a wrestling wall, we're going to give you the tetanus vaccine regardless if you've gotten COVID recently or not because that risk is much, much higher if you don't get the tetanus vaccine. But where you have the ability to reschedule, we are suggesting two weeks between vaccines.
Samantha, thank you very much for speaking with us today. I really appreciate it. I'm a patient of the Cleveland Clinic and I'm over 75 years old. My primary care doctor told me that I would be contacted by the clinic. She told me that about three weeks ago. I have not been contacted and every time I try to go online, I find out that all these places are already too busy. They won't even take your name and email address. So what is it that I should do at this time?
Do you have a MyChart account?
Yes.
Okay. Have you gotten an invitation through MyChart?
I have not.
Okay. What I would do, do you have a pen and paper handy?
Yes, I do.
I would email. Oh, let me think here. You know what? Let me, let me ask around. Do you have an email address I can reach back out to you?
Yes. I'll put it on the chat to you right now.
Perfect.
All right.
I want to make sure.
I have the same question. Can you send that out to the group? Because there's probably more than one of us on Cleveland Clinic having the same issue.
Yes, Samantha, this is Debbie. Just send it to me and I can email everybody in the group.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you so much.
Samantha, you didn't think that you were going to be doing some free consults, did you?
Hey, anything I can do to help?
You know, Samantha, most of us.
Do you have any questions?
I have one. But most of us who hit the, you know, over the 65, when they open that door, it's just, it is frustrating. And I can't imagine people who are older trying to run it. And I know it's not you personally or not the Cleveland Clinic, but I don't know who is responsible, the Ohio Department of Health or the Cuyahoga or Summit County Board of Health? I don't know, but I certainly would like to reach out to somebody to just, I've registered. I'm registered at Cleveland Clinic, UH, Discount Drug Mart. I get email, you're registered, we'll let you know, we'll let you know. Nobody's ever let me know. Plus, I go on like everybody else. Every day I go on the list of all the places. It's very frustrating. There's, we're, you know what? We're not a third world country. There's got to be a better way to do this.
Yeah, it's been a very, very, it's been frustrating for us as well to hear about our patients frustration because it's, the supplies are just so limited right now. I mean, if you look at the patient population of Ohio, I mean, we have tens of thousands, if not hundreds of thousands of people over the age of 75, but we're only getting, you know, a couple thousand doses each week for the, for certain health systems. So it's, there's a lot of thought going in the background that people don't see about how to try and do this fairly and equitably. And it's just one challenge and one barrier after another. So I appreciate your frustrations and I hear your frustrations. It's felt on both sides, I promise.
Well, who can we call or who can we reach out to?
I would contact, I mean, I don't know how quickly you'll get a response, but the Ohio Department of Health is the one that is responsible for the distribution of the vaccines. And they're the ones that make the decisions on what age group can go and get their vaccines and what patient population to go from after each, after each grouping.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Yes, I have one other question. Samantha, yesterday, or Sunday, my wife got the second shot and, you know, listing out all the side effects she had mentioned. She probably had a few of those, you know, the headaches, sore arm, and yadda, yadda, yadda. But one thing I didn't see or notice in any of those side effects, they didn't talk about the spouse getting sick.
No, it's, so the vaccine is not a live infection. It's not a weekend infection, so people cannot get. So I would say if a spouse or a household family member felt ill, it was probably totally unrelated.
I thought it was just sympathy sickness, but I had to lay down with her while she was sleeping, take an afternoon nap.
Hey, little afternoon nap, never hurt anybody.
Light her up.
Well, I was fortunate enough to have my first shot last Friday.
Wonderful.
I had no side effects, no sore arm, nothing, so.
That's awesome. Some, I'm glad you heard, it was good.
I've got a question.
Oh, go ahead, Debbie.
Oh, what, once somebody has had the second dose and they're immune, can they still be a carrier so they can like maybe get the virus? They're fighting it off and in the meantime, give it to somebody else?
Great question. So there are studies ongoing, but we don't know for sure that even if you have been vaccinated, if you could be a carrier. That's why the recommendation to continue wearing masks is in place because you could potentially still spread it. We don't know yet. One of the things that people can do to kind of study that. One of the things that people can do to kind of study that, what the researchers are doing, is taking samples on the nasal swabs, the patients that have been vaccinated to see if they're carrying it still. That would be awesome if that were the case, but we just don't yet.
Thank you.
All right.
And I've heard at least two stories of people who have died and the only thing they could pinpoint it to is getting the vaccination. Can you speak on that?
Well, you can't get COVID from the vaccine. Well, I don't, it's not going to be because of the vaccine. There are some patients that are getting COVID shortly after they become vaccinated. It is possible that you have COVID in your system and it's brewing and then you get vaccinated and then you because the vaccine didn't have enough time to work and kick in to protect you. But you cannot get COVID from the vaccine.
And is there anything that, not dying from the COVID, but from what they inject you with? And I realize, you know, percentages, you know, it could be one in a million, but when you hear one story, you can't help but ask.
Right. The vaccine components, like the, what keeps it in solution and what keeps it stable, are very, very similar to other vaccine products out there with the exception of that polyethylene glycosure base that I mentioned. And that's what we're attributing the allegations actions to just as it's slightly unique. But like I said, those are very, very common medical products. And like I said, we use the polyethylene glycosure, that's what Miralax is. It's used in bowel prep, colonoscopy. And I think if we would have seen people dying from a component of the vaccine, we would have seen it in those 37,026,000 patients that were in the clinical studies.
Okay, thank you, Samantha. This has been a hit, the timing of this presentation. Couldn't have come any sooner in terms of the peak of interest. And you could tell by, by that interest, by the number of questions that we have. We'll ask that you send your questions through the chat. Debbie, maybe you can kind of screenshot them or record them and maybe we can get some additional questions to you. Samantha, maybe in an email. We started the show much later, after the meeting. We do have some other agenda items to discuss. Samantha, you're welcome to stay on. I'm sure you're busy and you're more than welcome to transition if you so choose. So we want to thank you for speaking with us. I had about 10 questions myself. I have a research background myself. I worked for Cleveland Clinic for 60 years. And so I'll spare you for those questions.
Feel free to email me any questions you have. I'll be happy to respond. But I do have another one o'clock meeting, so I will sign off. So thank you all for your time and all your questions and thoughtful discussion.
Thank you.
We'll be sending you a token of our appreciation in the mail. So we thank you again for your time and just sharing so much informative information that we can use. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that was a very interesting talk. Those who booked, Samantha, knew what you were doing, particularly as I'm hosting this meeting. I was on the edge of my seat. So, club announcements and comments. Volunteers, I know we still want to install the storefronts at Safety Town. And I know the day is not an ideal day as I look at all the snow that keeps falling. But that installation is to be announced weather permitting. February 23rd speaker will be Monique Hammond on the topic of hearing loss, the silent epidemic. And I believe she's also the author of, what did you say, The Unexpected Journey Into the World of Hearing Loss. Our board meeting will be held at noon via Zoom on February 26th. Dave, you want to mention some more about the reverse raffle?
Yes, I do. I still do have four tickets that were turned back in. So anybody interested to take some more tickets, give me a call. I'm filling out the paperwork. Actually was doing it during the meeting. I have probably 75% of the information in yet, which tells me I have 125% of the information out yet. So that's out of 200. So please get that information. I have two weeks to get all the data entered into the system. And then Debbie, I need to talk to you about how we link into these emails in order to put it out a week ahead of time to let people know that, to look for the Zoom meeting. And I don't know what the question is for you or for Steve. How many people can link into these Zoom meetings?
I have to look into that. I'm not sure what our contract is.
It depends on what service we bought. It's probably at least 100.
Right. Okay. I wouldn't think we'd be over 100. I know it's going to be an exciting evening, but I can imagine most people are just going to wait and see if they win and not tie in. Other than that, I haven't put together an email, which I need to do for the committee for that evening. I will try to get that out tomorrow so we can start thinking it through as far as what and how we're going to do this process. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Dave. Thank you for all your work pushing this forward. I did get my additional tickets. Still got the envelope.
All right. Free advertising. That's going to cost me.
And so the March 30th is the tentative day for the Rotary Four Way Test Speech Contest. I have here Josh Hayes needs three judges. And so look to hear more about what that program needs. Is there any new business to discuss? Excuse me, are there any other announcements to discuss or share? Not hearing any. Okay, we'll go into our four-way test. We're a little bit over one o'clock. The four-way test, other things.
The things we think, say, or do.
Say and do.
First, is it the truth? Second, is it fair to all concerned? Third. Better friendship. Fourth, will it be beneficial to all concerned?
All right, everyone. Not bad for a substitute teacher. I saw Paige put something out saying, yeah, Dave, we definitely have a substitute teacher. And then she left. No walking out on a substitute teacher. You'll be reported.
Okay. Job, Latif.
Great job.
At this time, I move, is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I motion, we adjourn.
Okay.
All right. We don't need a second, so the meeting is adjourned. Have a great rest of your afternoon and we'll look to see you next time. Goodbye.